We'll call it order tonight's committee of the hall for the August 4th, 2020 city council meeting. The council should have the minutes from the committee of the hall from the July of the 21st committee of the hall meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries then. Questions on the agenda for city manager Buston?
Yes, Jim, this is Kelly. On the item about the AT&amp;T fiber, you and I exchanged some messages today about what's supposed to be in exhibit A of that. I was under the impression exhibit A would be some kind of a diagram of the city showing us the route. Are we gonna... Your comment was, your reply was that those documents that are in there were sufficient, or were the documents. Are we gonna get some more information on the route for fiber, the proposed fiber optics in the city?
I don't believe...
I'm sorry. I'll mute on my end.
Can you hear me? Okay. We... Yeah. There you go. Okay, so it's my understanding that that particular business has yet, I don't know if they have any customers. So all that they are doing right now is co-locating at the AT&amp;T building, which is right across the street. So you'll see that little fiber, so right now, that little fiber output that they have right behind the building, in that little triangle, that's all they have. That's what I understand right now. Now, they have, I did send you an email that showed kind of an explanation of what their business is, and it seems like they are an Auburn University supplier in different locations around the state. And so I would anticipate that they'll probably be supplying Auburn University here, but how they get to Auburn University, I don't think has been determined yet, what that route would be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the council on the, related to the agenda tonight? Okay. I just wanted to make one quick announcement. At the last meeting on July the 21st, under other business, we opened that up and had discussion about a couple of different items. Jim and I have talked afterwards, the purpose of other business is for, if there's an item that needs to be added to our agenda that's not on there, or things that are official, it's not a time to have an open discussion about new items. And that was my mistake for letting that conversation progress. So just to let the council know that that's not the purpose of other business, and after a year and a half, I should know better, and I apologize to each of y'all for making that mistake, okay? All right.
So, I have a question. So when do we present new business? It's not on the agenda.
Do you have recommendations?
So, the whole idea is you would present, if you wanted something to discuss at a meeting, you would bring it up at a committee of the hall, so that we could announce it to the public that at such and such a date and time, this particular item is going to be discussed by the council. It's, it all has to do with being transparent in your deliberations on whatever it is that you are going to bring up to the body.
So, so Jim, what you're suggesting is any question about any item that's coming up that we haven't either emailed you about, or we haven't discussed at another time, the committee of the hall is the time to have those discussions or questions?
Well, yeah, according to...
Not discussions, but to bring those questions up or ask for...
Right, according to how you all have set up your meetings, is that if you wanted to discuss something, you bring it up at, say, one of our work sessions to be brought up at the committee of the hall, so that we can put it on the committee of the whole agenda, so that the public will know that you're going to be discussing that at the committee of the hall. So, there have been times where something has come up at last minute, and you have called me, and so I've been able to put that on the committee of the hall so that the council can, so that the public knows that the council is going to address that. But normally, the way you all have set up your rules is that it should come before one of our agenda meetings on Friday. You all decide if that's what you want to do and put it on committee of the hall, and then we would put it on the agenda for committee of the hall.
What you're talking about, Jim, is mainly the Whitten rule that I experienced a couple of years ago.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
But Jim, if people have general questions, just about things that might be going on in their ward, or projects that might be going on in the city, how would you recommend? I mean, obviously, we can all email you, we can all call you and get those kind of answers. Is it appropriate time during a council meeting to get those kind of, have those kind of questions answered? I guess would be the simplest way of me asking you this.
Again, from a staff perspective, we prefer those questions to come ahead of time, so we have sufficient time to research them and give you a detailed answer, or as much of an answer as we can. I'm happy to answer any questions I can right now, and staff will also answer during the meeting. But if you have questions that you know you want answers to, it's best to give them to us ahead of time so that we can answer back. And if it's something that's in, of interest to the entire council, I will copy the entire council on the question. As you saw this week, we had several questions that I felt were of interest to the entire council, so my answer came back to the entire council.
Okay. And in saying that, because I did have a question tonight about an update that one of my constituents wanted to know about what's going on over there on Richland and Judd. Are they breaking grounds or something over there? I hadn't got a chance to... And if that's something that I need to, that y'all need to research or whatever, that's fine, but I want to put that question out there.
Connie, you said Richmond and Judd.
Judd.
Oh, and Judd. Allison, do you know, Allison Frazier, our city engineer is on, or Megan, do you know?
Yes, sir. It's the Alabama Power Transmission Line Project that they've been working on for some time. They just acquired all the rest of the right-of-way, and they are relocating lines there. And Allison, did you have any other project they're working on?
Yeah, it may be the subdivision for the Cordino property, I can't remember the name, but it may be that work as well.
Okay. And I think that's, and I think that's what they was thinking, that is that work that's going on. So I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or anything?
Perhaps we ought to add to the committee of the whole agenda, an opportunity to, for inquiries or something, because, you know, all the thing we have on there is questions on the agenda. If we're supposed to bring it up during a committee of the whole, like Connie's question there, it was not submitted ahead of time, but it was something that she needed an answer to, maybe there would be an opportunity during the committee of the whole for us to throw those things out there, so.
Jim, what's your thought on that?
Thank you all.
I mean, the rest of the council, what do y'all think about that? I certainly, excuse me?
I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Anyone else like to speak up to that idea of adding an extra item to our committee of the whole that just has kind of opened, and an opportunity for us to ask some questions? And I think the intent would be questions that are, you know, have pretty simple answers to them, that you're not doing any type of real lengthy research, or having to take up a lot of time to answer. Is everybody okay with that? Just to add, I've had two of y'all say okay. I see a couple of other people nodding heads, so.
Mayor, this is...
I'm okay with it.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Whitten.
I would suggest, though, that we have kind of some parameters on time on that, because, I mean, that could go into the weeds, it could go pretty far. I mean, I think if it's going to be simple questions that could be answered by staff, by the city manager in an email, then that seems to be the most appropriate. If it's something that is of value to the council as a whole, then I would say bring it up at the committee of the whole. That is important for the whole. I mean, I just, to me, I think it could really go down a rabbit hole. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have an opportunity to ask open-ended questions, but I think that it should be some expectations and some understanding of how that works.
Well, why don't we work on that? I think there's a lot of discipline that we have to undergo to have this liberty to do that, and certainly, we've got to ask the kind of questions that the staff can be prepared to answer that are not going to take up a lot of time. If it's something more involved than that, then I would hope each of us know by this time that that's a question that I need to maybe have a personal conversation with the city manager about, send him an email to ask that kind of question, and expect a longer answer. There is an appropriateness to what we're doing here, as to the time that's involved in what we're asking the staff to do. So with y'all's blessing, I'll work with Jim on this, and we'll try to come up with some parameters, and get that put in place in the near future to allow us during the committee of the whole to ask the kind of questions that Connie asked tonight. And we'll use that as a template, as a sample question, okay? Everybody okay with that?
I'm fine with that, Mayor. I might add, I think it would be good to, the questions just pertaining to, something like Ms. Fitch asked tonight, she wasn't able to get to the city manager possibly because of her work today earlier, so she had to, night, but I think when all possible, through email, like Ms. Whitten stated, would probably be the best way to do it. And that way, you give him time to have an answer for you, and also the staff may need to work on it or something. But when you run into a, you get asked a question right before you come into the meeting, I certainly don't see a problem with a council person asking the question during the committee of the whole, if that be the case.
Okay. Thank you, Tommy, appreciate those comments.
On a related topic, Mr. Mayor.
Bob, we can barely hear you, man.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Hey, on a related note, speaking to discussions that occurred in our packet meeting on Friday, some of the council weren't present for it, and I thought it might be appropriate also to share the discussion that we had concerning moving forward with short-term rental ordinance deliberations, and firstly, with the student housing moratorium. I know during the pandemic, everything was stripped down to its bare bones, but for some of you who weren't present on Friday, there was a discussion of moving forward with other business that's, the broader city business that people are expecting us to fulfill, even during this time of COVID and in, and in a Zoom meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Parsons, I had planned to make a comment on that during my mayor's comments tonight, and at that time, I'll allow Jim, if he'd like to make some further comments on that as well, if that's okay. We'll save that to that time. That's all right. Good, okay. All right, any other, anything else from the council? Any questions on the agenda for tonight? I can see none. Go ahead, move to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned from the committee of the hall. It is after seven o'clock, so I will go ahead and call it a order, tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for August the 4th, 2020. And Lindsay, if you'd please do the roll call.
Dawson?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Hobie?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. To begin tonight, I'd like to make some personal comments, and then I'd like to allow any other council member that would like to make a comment, please do that. And then I'd like to ask the permission of the council to have a moment of silence in the memory of County Commissioner Johnny Lawrence. Johnny was a fixture in this community for all of his life. He served our fire department for almost 30 years. He served our county commission for 18 years. He was a great guy. His daughter was in the marching band at Auburn High School, and is currently in the marching band at Auburn University. He was a very supportive dad. He wanted his community to be the very best place it could be. If you didn't see him at work, or seeing him at a community meeting, you saw him with a camera strapped around his neck, and he was taking photos of different activities going on in Auburn. It is tragic that he has died of COVID-19. It is tragedy and a disappointment for our community that Johnny will no longer be with us, helping us guide Auburn into the future. Johnny will be missed. My prayers will certainly be with his family as they move forward without Johnny. I know there's some other people in the council that might want to say something as well before our moment of silence and all. If there is, please speak up.
Mayor, if I may, the Lawrence family has been dear friends of mine for, gosh, at least 15-plus years. I count them by Kate's birthday. First met Johnny through the Red Cross, and then our time planning plans and military vehicle meetings, and he appointed me to the first Lee County Planning Commission, which the first and only Lee County Planning Commission. And he really was kind of the conduit for my want and desire to seek service in government and to serve my community. And he just was a good sounding board for wise and level-headed thought processes, and I just count him as a dear friend. And I just want to thank Julia and Maggie for sharing him with us. And I just pray that we can continue to honor Johnny's love of community and service by being good servants, as he has been, and hope that we can continue to be. And I just hope that we all understand that Johnny just had a big heart, and he just wanted to give as much as he could back, and that included sharing Maggie and Julia with his community as well. And my hearts go out to them, and to his brother Jimmy and his sister-in-law Beth. And I just, I just know that in time, we'll find the right way to honor him and his memory.
Thank you, Ms. Whitten. Anyone else? Okay. If you would, if you'd join me in a moment of silence. Excuse me? Yes?
I just wanted to say, I was just shocked to hear that news. I didn't even know of his passing. But I don't know him personally, but I've had some dealings with him in the past, and like Beth said, you know, he was really a phenomenal guy. And I hate to hear a news, you know, hear that type of news, and so my prayers go out to him and his family.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if you'd join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. In mayor's comments tonight, I'd like to mention a number of things. We all saw the announcement that the football season right now is planned for 10 games, five at home, five on the road. We, they set a start date of September 26th, but we have no idea when Auburn's home games will be. I will tell you that within the staff here, within the larger spectrum of the Chamber of Commerce, the downtown merchants, et cetera, that there are discussions going on now about how this city and what we can do to best serve our merchants, and to make our communities inviting as possible to what we expect to be a less than full house allowed into the stadium. We certainly want to, as safely as possible, I'll say that loud and clear, as safely as possible, make sure that our community is inviting those who want to come and spend a game day with us, in a way to, to open our doors to the economy that comes with our visitors. So if you have any thoughts or positions on that, let us know. This is a very fluid situation. We all know that what is planned today could be not utilized tomorrow, and it's a, it's a very difficult situation that the leadership in college athletics and the university and higher ed are trying to get their arms around. Related to that, I was a part of a Zoom meeting last week with Auburn University, and they introduced the idea of a healthier you, which is their effort to try to promote good habits and good living with all of the community. Obviously, this will be centrally focused on campus with students, faculty, and administrators and employees, but they brought a lot of stakeholders from the city onto this call to include us, to figure out ways that we could share this message from a global perspective all around the community. So we'll be working with them, but I appreciate the efforts of Jason Peavy and his staff and his list of committee members at the university for including the city on this. And I believe this will be something that you'll be seeing as we approach the first day at the university's school. One Auburn is continuing, all of the book clubs are off and running right now. They, they're about three weeks into this. I believe we've got 16 to 17 different groups of people who are reading one of the books that were offered for this, for this opportunity. I can tell you personally that the group that I'm involved with, which is six guys, we have met twice, and we've had excellent conversations, very rich discussion, very transparent and honest feelings with one another, and it's been very cool and pleasant, and we meet every Thursday morning at seven o'clock. One of the parts of the tenants of One Auburn was one conversation, and our first conversation, we will film next week, and I'm proud that Mr. Bishop Nolan Tolbert will be the gentleman that I'll be interviewing in our first conversation for Auburn. So looking forward to that. And related to what Bob said earlier, there was a discussion on Friday, and the city manager and I have been talking about this for the last couple of weeks. We all know that when the pandemic hit, and we went to Zoom meetings, that we were asked by the governor to make our meetings as minimal as possible to keep our government working and functioning, or to reply to the needs of our community related to what is going on with COVID-19. And I believe by and large, through the city manager's leadership, we have done that. But now we're going into our fifth month, and there are really some needs in our community that we need to address, and some things that we have actually put on the shelf as a way of trying to do what the governor asked us to do. Two of those are student housing and short-term rentals, which are subject matters that I brought forward after we were all elected. We put together task force, we had meetings, we collected information, data, we heard from our public, and now is the time to, to get moving and make, and make decisions about how we want to govern both of those going into the future. So I'll let the city manager talk to this, but we will certainly be trying to get those back moving again. Both of those were, most of those, most of the topics related to short-term rentals and student housing will emanate from the planning commission before they come to the city council, but we will start in earnest trying to get those back going. It appears that we're going to be doing Zoom meetings for the next little while, who knows? I think I can tell you all that our next meeting, the second meeting in August, we'll be doing through Zoom. Much past that, we can't predict, but I think the expectation is that we might be meeting like this for a little while longer. So in an effort to try to keep things moving, we're going to start trying to get some of those things back on track and back in the queue. Mr. Buston, would you like to add anything to any of that?
Not a whole lot, but we are, staff has been instructed that we are moving full-speed ahead as if normal. We're treating this new Zoom platform in all of our different board meetings, whether it's planning commission, BZA, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, all the different boards have been, all the staff has been instructed to move forward with business as usual. I believe the planning commission will be discussing the moratorium at their work session, at their next work session. Forrest can maybe tell me when that is. I don't remember off the top of my head, but Forrest, do you know when that is? Forrest unmuted his mic, but we can't hear him, so. Megan, do you know when that is?
It should be Monday, the 10th, their noon packet meeting. That will be just staff going over some things with them, but yeah, that will be the beginnings of the moratorium discussion with the planning commission. And Forrest was on, and he may just be having, are you off mute now, Forrest? Yeah, it is Monday, the 10th.
Thank you.
But other than that, all of the, even the planning commission meetings now are going forward with, I think a lot of the people who were holding back, many people that had business to do, either with the BZA or in front of planning commission, were kind of holding back until they saw that we could come together in person, but they now too have seen that this is going to be a prolonged effort via electronic means, so they have started pushing all of their, all of their business now through the different committees.
One of the things that we have not done for the last couple of months is recognize our employees, and that's unfortunate. We've got an outstanding staff here at the city of Auburn who does a great job, and each month, we recognize an employee of the month, and then we recognize many of our employees who have reached certain years of service to the community. But the other day, we, we did some filming and some video, and we tried to put some of this together in an appropriate media for the times we're living in and our circumstances, and still bring honor to those who have done a great job on behalf of the city. So if you will indulge myself and the city manager now, we'd like to play a video for
Each month at city council meetings, we recognize an employee of the month for doing an outstanding job. Obviously, over the last couple of months, we've not been meeting in person in our council chambers, and all of our meetings have been through Zoom, and this important part of what we do as a city council has not been honored. So today, we're going to try to catch up with a number of employee of the month recognitions that have covered basically the spring and into the summer, because we do feel like, and I feel like, it's important to recognize our good employees and all the great work they've done, especially under these unique circumstances we're currently living in. So today, I have a memorandum written by Scott Cummings, Executive Director of Development Services, to Megan McGowan Crouch, and to Jim Buston, our city manager. The purpose of this memorandum is to nominate Leslie Beach as the city of Auburn Employee of the Month for April 2020. Leslie has been employed with the city since 2017, and currently serves as an Economic Development Officer, Financial Management and the Development Services Business Unit. Leslie sets a high standard of being a dedicated public servant by her willingness to jump from task to task and perform at a high level, adding value to our customers that we serve here in development services. This past year, when we experienced an emergency storm drain and street repair on West Glen Avenue, Leslie took charge to regularly communicate with the businesses who operate in the vicinity of the road closure by providing schedule updates and listening to the concerns of those businesses. Leslie coordinated with the staff from Public Works Engineering Services and Inspection Services Departments to be sure we provided access to those businesses. Recently, as the city responded to the needs of our business community in the wake of the COVID-19-related business activities, Leslie worked with others to organize and develop a business resource webpage on the city's website, specifically to assist local businesses with resources and guidance on how to navigate impacts related to the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the most exciting characteristics exhibited in Leslie is her passion to serve, along with her teammates in development services, in supporting our customers here in the city of Auburn. It is an honor to have Leslie take ownership of her assigned duties. She elevates the standard of customer service on every occasion. I am proud to nominate Leslie Beach as the Employee of the Month for April 2020. And today, we're excited to honor our Employee of the Month for the month of May, Ashley Brown, and I have a memorandum written by Chris Warren, the Director of the Auburn Public Library. It is my honor to nominate Ashley Brown Engagement and Outreach Librarian for the Auburn Public Library as the Employee of the Month. Ashley began working for the Auburn Public Library in 2005, and she has served as Assistant Youth Services Librarian and Reference Librarian prior to her role in engagement and outreach. She consistently demonstrates outstanding leadership and professional excellence, and she has positively impacted the Auburn Public Library, the community that we serve, and our profession as a whole. As Engagement and Outreach Librarian, Ashley coordinates all of the Auburn Public Library's programs, events, and outreach activities. In fact, under her leadership, the library hosts nearly 1,000 such activities last year, attended by more than 28,000 children, teens, and adults. In addition, Ashley has distinguished herself through her service on the American Library In addition, Ashley has distinguished herself through her service on the American Library Association's Intellectual Freedom Roundtable and the Public Library Association's Family Engagement Task Force. Ashley's hard work and dedication are appreciated by her colleagues, her coworkers, and patrons alike. It is for these reasons that I highly recommend Ashley, recommend Ashley should be recognized
Normally, we'd all be giving each of these people a big hand and an ovation for what they've done, and we certainly don't want just having a video instead of doing it in person to take away from the fact that they're all outstanding, they've done a great job on behalf of the city, and we appreciate everything that they're doing and will do. So congratulations and thank all of our employees for a job well done, as always. Chief Dawson, I don't know if you want to say anything about Mr. Dorsey, but I would just imagine that if we were in the council chambers, you probably have to pipe in and say something about him. I want to give you that opportunity if you'd like to have it right now.
Well, yeah, Mayor, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity. Words can't really describe what Captain Dorsey has meant to our city and meant to me as a person. He started Police Division in 1986, and I started in 1987. We worked together through our entire career. He's a first-class individual. You won't find one any better than Lorenzo Dorsey, and we're very fortunate to have him protecting our families and our coworkers and everybody in the City of Auburn over the last thirty or some odd years. He means so much to me, I'll tell you what. He got me through some tough times, and he's a, he's just a stand-up guy. I can't say enough good about him, and he will be thoroughly missed, but I do appreciate his leadership and everything he did for the citizens of Auburn, in particular, me and my family.
I'd like to add something too, if that's a possibility.
Sure.
I wasn't expecting to do this, so I really thought we'd have an opportunity in person, but through this opportunity of being on city council, Chief Dawson and I had a conversation, I'd say a little bit over a year ago, and kind of put some things together that I had no idea. I was involved in a car accident, for those that don't know, and back in 92 when I was a kid, and through through some weird circumstances, I learned that Chief Dawson and Mr. Dorsey, Lieutenant Dorsey, were the ones that showed up to the accident to try to save my life. And I just can't thank the both of y'all enough for what y'all have done for this community, for me, my family, and I just don't have enough words to say thank you, and he's going to be greatly missed.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate you sharing that with us.
If I may add, Mayor, what Councilman Dixon just did, and I can think I can speak for Captain Dorsey on this, that's why you do the job being a police officer. It was a severe accident, I won't go into detail about it, but it was a severe accident involving loss of life in the case, and it's one of those accidents you never get out of your mind, you never get over. But that's why you do it, is because all these years later, you find out how much you're appreciated, and that's why, that's why a police officer does the job he does is because of situations like Councilman Dixon just spoke of. It means a lot to myself and Captain Dorsey to know that he appreciates us and still remembers us after all these years, and it's just, it's just a blessing.
Good. Thank you, Tommy. Thank both of y'all for your comments tonight, and certainly thank you to Captain Dorsey, and we look forward to seeing you around town. He might have a fishing pole with him, but he'll still be at the same big spot. So thank you for your service to our community. During the committee of the whole, we had a very short committee of the whole meeting, but we did talk about the potential of adding an item to our committee of the whole agenda that gives the council some type of pleasure to ask questions, some basic questions with short answers of the city manager in the future. So myself and Jim will be working on what that looks like and trying to set some parameters around it and see if we can get that put in place in the near future. At this time, are there any other announcements from any of the council members tonight? Anyone?
Mayor, I have a couple.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to reiterate, when you mentioned the a healthier you, that our education efforts are still ongoing with ensuring that everyone practices good, responsible method, methods of trying to stave off COVID through washing hands, social distancing, mask wearing, and, you know, the chamber has been working hard on Keep Auburn Open, and we've had multiple campaigns in addition to the governor's mandate and her efforts. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're still working to make sure that we reiterate the education efforts that are going on, as well as on August 17th, I'm hosting a Ward Three virtual stakeholder meeting where Ward Three residents, any resident of Auburn, any stakeholder of Auburn is welcome to join virtually, and we'll talk about things that are happening in Ward Three. There's a lot of things going on, and with that coupling, right behind the 17th, the city is hosting a focus, virtual focus meeting on Highway 280 corridor, which encompasses wards two, three, and four. And so I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to weigh in on that as well, since that will be the next focus area for the planning commission and the planning department. So anyway, those are the things that are happening in Ward Three, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we are still working on making sure that we reiterate the need to, to, to enforce what the governor's mandate is, and that is to be safe. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Smith?
I just want to take a second to think and to let our educators know with ATS and Lee Scott and Trinity and all those teaching that they're in my thoughts and prayers. They've got a, quite a challenge ahead starting next week. It's going to be a challenging year, but I don't think there's a better school system in this state, in this country, that can meet that challenge and put the students first and make sure that they have a safe and wonderful school year. I just want all of them to know that they're in my thoughts and prayers, and we're looking forward to a wonderful, wonderful school year.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council like to make an announcement?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, if I may, how much I appreciate our medical personnel at East Alabama and the battle they're fighting with COVID-19. I'm a little bit biased, being the father of a nurse at East Alabama Medical Center, but, you know, for years and years, I went off to work, my family would worry about me now, worry about my daughter going off to work and fighting the battle on COVID-19 day in, day out, putting herself at risk, like all our medical personnel do, and I think sometimes we forget the job they're doing and what they're actually seeing out there, and I can't imagine what they're going through. But I do want to know, I appreciate, and I ask the community to continue all the medical personnel in their prayers tonight, as well as our first responders.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for that reminder. Any other council member like to make an announcement? Okay, we'll move forward then. At this point in time, it's an opportunity for citizens to communicate to the city council items on the agenda. I remind you that the items that you were to talk to us about at this point in time need to be on the agenda. Please give your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes to speak, and please raise your hand on the Zoom platform, and we will try to call on you and get it correctly. Do we have anyone agree? Is his hand raised? Chris Sire, is that correct?
It's Seer, Chris Seer.
Chris Seer, okay. Go ahead.
Mayor Anders, members of the council, good evening. My name is Chris Seer. My wife and I and three boys live at 330 Lightness Drive in the Solomere subdivision in West Auburn. We moved here in about 2009, and...
Hey, Chris, let me interrupt you real quick, sir. Are you wanting to speak to us regarding the rezoning?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that'd be fine. Go right ahead. There is a public hearing for that.
I'll wait till that, I'm sorry.
Okay, not a problem. Sorry, I forgot to mention that as well. There are a couple items that have a public hearing, and that being one of them. All right, anybody else who would like to speak to the council about any item on the Anything? Okay, we'll move forward. Mr. Buston, city manager's communication?
Under city manager's communication, we have one board vacancy to announce. The Westface Improvement District Board of Directors has one vacancy. This is a six-year term, which begins September 16th, 2020, and ends September 15th, 2026. The appointment will be made at the September 1st, 2020 city council meeting. Next item in business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item separately?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to remove one.
Go ahead.
Item 6D1.
6D1?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to remove 6D7, please.
6D7, okay. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Buston, we'll take those 6D1.
Okay, item 6D1 is a contract with the Alabama Department of Transportation for the installation, operation, and maintenance of interchange and roadway lighting located on Interstate 85 at exit 50.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Questions and comments? Mr. Dawson, we'll start with you.
I'd just like to say how much I appreciate the city manager and the staff working with Aladot to make this happen and finally seeing some movement on it. It's very exciting. It's a safety hazard, as it is. We really need those lights down there, and I'm so happy to see it happening, and I can only imagine the growth that's going to involve for our first exit northbound 95, and I'm excited about getting the landscaping and getting the lighting for the safety reasons of the night, and I'm just very appreciative of the hard work that's gone into this.
Thank you, G. Anyone else have a comment or question?
Mayor, we can, Greg, do you want to share that? This was not part of the packet, I thought it was going to be. We did share it with the members that attended the agenda packet meeting, but we're putting up a, a graphic that shows the lights that will go on exit 50, there are approximately 57 of those lights, and we're going to just put it up temporarily so you can see the number. Right now, there are no lights there, it's totally dark. And all those little circles are our lights.
Make a big difference, want to, Chief?
Absolutely. You won't be able to tell us nothing down here on this side of town.
Chief Dawson, you'll be able to walk at night.
That's right. I need to do plenty of that, too, Miss Connaught.
Me too, I'll come down to join you.
Come on.
All right, any other comments or questions for the, from the council, for the staff, or for Mr. Buston, excuse me? All right, here none, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Item 6D7 is a development agreement with Auburn Bank.
Need for approval?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? We'll start with you, Mr. Hovey.
I just need to abstain.
Good. Anything else from the council? Here none, we have a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries.
That's all we have, my assistant.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
No motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is carried forth.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 7A as a franchise agreement with Southern Light LLC. A public hearing is required.
I'll intervene for ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Here none, Lindsey?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please raise your hand on Zoom. We will, we'll call on you, and please give your name and address for the record. Okay, nobody for the public hearing? Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. What is the difference between a user fee and a franchise fee? I'm on page, well, I don't have a page. User fee is paragraph 6.1, and franchise fee is paragraph 6.10. It says we have a user fee but no franchise fee, and I just wondered what the difference
So the use fee and the franchise fee are interchangeable? That's a, it's not a user fee, it's a use fee? USD, use fee? Kelly, you're muted.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So they're basically the same thing. It's a 5% fee. One of the things that's different with this particular company, cable companies, when they are getting a franchise with us, are not required by law, and actually, they don't, give us a, a fee, the 5% for the sales they make on providing internet service. They only give us a fee based on their television sales. In this particular case, this company, all it's doing is providing internet service, and they have agreed to give us a 5% fee on the sale of, of internet service. So a lot of times, which you'll see on the bill, if you get the cable bill or, you know, sometimes your Verizon bill or whatever, you will see a use fee, and that's basically the franchise fee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the city manager? Do I have a motion to approve?
移到 Second.
I have a motion, a second, Lindsey with a roll call?
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7B1 is Mike Mayer requesting to rezone 133.9 acres from rural to development district housing for properties located at 1950 Martin Luther King Drive. Planning Commission announced the recommended approval of this request. This is the second reading, and a public hearing is required.
So at this time, will, do we have a motion? This is a second reading, so I'll handle this a little bit differently than we do a first reading. So do we have a motion?
Summoned.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to address the city council? Please raise your Anyone like to address the city council, please raise your hand on Zoom. Mr. Sire, I believe you were the, you wanted to speak to this a little bit earlier. We'll try to call on you first, and just if you'd please start over for us, Chris, and just give your name and address for the record.
All right, yes, uh, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Seer.
Thank you, Chris.
330 Likeness uh in the Solomir subdivision, like I said, in West Auburn. I'd like to say good evening to the council and mayor. Um, we moved here in 2009 and have enjoyed an active role with the uh HOA in the growth and improvement of our neighborhood and community. And I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the council for uh your help that has been given in this area. Several items related to our neighborhood and everything. You guys have really helped us out on that. Uh, recently, we were made aware of the request for rezoning of the property located at 1950 West Martin Luther King Drive, and the interest and activity on the western edge of the city of Auburn is is exciting, and we look forward to the long-term plans that the city has for this area with the parks and walking trails and other amenities that enhance our quality of life. But in the short term, though, we are, we and our neighbors are very concerned about the impacts that the construction traffic could have on traffic flow and safety throughout the Solomir subdivision. In the presentation for Phase B of the preliminary plan submitted by Bolt Engineering, that would tie 131 home sites into the Solomir subdivision via Canai Pass with uh without the proposed connector road between Richland and Highway 14 in place. The only available access to these 130, to building these 131 homes and clearing of the land is directly through the middle of our uh neighborhood and Solomir Lane. Our community has expressed concerns and frustrations already with some traffic issues and speeds that we have in Solomir, and we're extremely concerned about the negative impact that the amount of uh construction traffic would have on our neighborhood. Uh, we trust that the city of Auburn and the developer can plan for an alternate construction entrance for Phase B that would not disrupt the quality of life we currently enjoy. Mayor Andrews and city council, we, I'd just like to say the homeowners association really appreciates your time and attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your time. Who would be next? All right, Mr. Al Allen? Al?
I just unmuted. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Mayor Andrews, uh, city manager Buston, and members of the city council, good evening. I'm Al Island. Um, my wife Sally and I live in Solomir. We live on the west side of the Solomir uh neighborhood. Uh, unlike Chris, we've not lived here that long. We moved here about a year ago. Uh, but we've lived in Auburn for over 20 years. We raised three sons in Auburn, but all of them are married now, live in Birmingham. Sorry about that, but we're working on it. Anyway, uh, I heard what Chris had to say about it, and we are concerned about the same thing that he is, but there's also some issues that we feel like need to be addressed that are probably a bigger concern to the folks right over here where I live, on Denali Lane. And that is that um the uh, we don't in principle oppose the opportunity for the landowner to, adjacent to Solomir, to request a change in zoning. Uh, we realize that growth in the community managed properly can have long-term benefits for the residents of Auburn. We've seen that. The rapid growth in our subdivision without proper infrastructure and planning to manage the additional traffic volume is a serious concern for us and our neighbors, not just construction traffic, but the volume of people coming out of here and trying to get in here. We already experienced delays. Uh, there's only one access for the entire Solomir neighborhood, and that goes on Highway 14. Speed limit out there is 50 miles an hour. Uh, it's very challenging already with 200-plus housing units in Solomir at the present time. Phase A of the preliminary development plan submitted by Bolt Engineering would add another 70 housing units to that one access point with no alternative access point for those folks. They would just join us. And to put approximately 300 households through the one point of access is a serious concern for us. And so um with the new zoning, we sincerely hope the city will work with the developer to mitigate this additional volume through our only access point. And um we do appreciate the cooperation of the city that has extended with working with the HOA board over here, and also Council Gris, Councilman Griswold. We appreciate his efforts to understand the issues that we anticipate affecting our neighborhood in this development, as this development progresses. So um we look forward to working with everyone involved, including the planning commission, to ensure that the Plainsman Lake development process thoroughly and responsibly addresses the concerns of the residents of Solomir. And uh so Mayor Andrews, uh, city manager Buston, members of the city council, we do, we do appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Island, just before you leave, uh, could you actually give us your physical address, please, for the, just so we have it for the record?
Sure, 142 Denali Lane.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, would there be anyone else? Who else? I know that there are also members of the developer, developers team, which all like to speak at this time as far as the public hearing. Okay. All right, we'll move forward.
Brendan Bolt.
Okay. Mr. Bolt?
Yes, this is Brendan Bolt with Bolt Engineering, 406 South 7th Street, Opelika. We appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, and so we, we have been working with our traffic engineer and our city engineering and city traffic department to come up with various scenarios to analyze through uh through getting prepared to to not adversely impact the residents of Solomir. Be happy to answer any.
Yeah. Could you elaborate on what some of those methods could be to alleviate some of the traffic through the neighborhood or the construction concerns that you just heard?
Sure. The uh, some of the scenarios look at um, you know, temporary construction entrances off 14, provided we can get those permitted through ALDOT. Other scenarios the city has requested have been traffic signal analysis and turn lane analysis for adding turn lane into Solomir, and whether or not Solomir can be warranted for a turn lane without that north-south connector that was mentioned earlier. So each of those results are kind of underway. You know, as we come up with new issues, we discuss them with the city. The uh, the city will give us their feedback, and we have our traffic engineer reanalyze each one.
Any other council members have a question for Mr. Bolt while he's with us? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bolt. If we need to come back to you, we will, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, I want to make sure. Is anyone else who'd like to speak during the public hearing? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold?
We've had some meetings with the HOA, and we've had a Zoom meeting with the city staff, and we've had meetings with Bolt Engineering, and I just would like to thank everybody who's been participating in this process for the uh the willingness to meet and discuss the uh problems and the alternatives for it. I would like to know, from the staff's perspective, what upcoming planning commission meetings, plans, reviews, or what, what is the next step? Should we approve the rezoning tonight so that the HOA and the residents are fully advised as to um what moves forward? You know, is there, perhaps Forrest could answer that if Jim wants to direct it that way. But um, you know, what, what else, what, what goes on next? Thank you.
So city planner, Mr. Cotton, would you care to address that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Um, you're gonna, based on the concept plan that we've seen, and assuming that that's what they move forward with, there are, there is a multi-family component, specifically townhouses. Based on the zoning they are requesting, there would be conditional use approval required for any residential use and DDH other than a single-family detached residence. There will also be uh multiple, like, well, certainly, there will be multiple subdivision approvals that will be necessitated. Um, preliminary and final plats, I think we can presume that a development agreement um that's handled out of uh Mr. Cummings' shop would also accompany um some of these items as well. So there will be multiple applications that will require public hearings in order for them to accomplish what they've represented to us, they want to accomplish on what is certainly a preliminary concept plan.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yeah, there were some concerns from some residents that, you know, the only ones that received postcard notifications were those that were uh adjacent to the rezoning application area, which is appropriate, but there were concerns that they would not be notified of, oh, you know, in-progress reviews or master plan approvals or planning commission reviews or conditional use approvals. All of those things will be announced through the e-notifier system. Is that fair to say?
Yes, sir. You will have multiple uh subdivision plat applications that will be going through the process. You will certainly have at least one conditional use application going through the process, and they all have um multiple different types of public notification requirements, including certified mailings to adjacent property owners, newspaper advertisements, and posting of signs on the subject property.
Okay, good. Thank you. I think that alleviates some of the concerns. And and what would be the timeline? So should, again, should we approve this rezoning this evening? Uh, do you have a rough timeline of when construction would actually begin?
Uh, no, sir. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, it's all going to be dependent upon the developer's timeframe. We, we are ready to accept applications as soon as they're ready to submit them, and we will review them thoroughly and appropriately, but they, they dictate the timeframe, we do not.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else in the council have a question or comment? Okay, I, I have one. Mr. Buston, uh, Mr. Bolt Engineer mentioned some understandings or agreements with ALDOT to create a construction entrance, maybe look at a light at the Solomir entrance. Could, could we give an idea of what that process is like and how likely that is, that something like that could happen and when it would happen?
So we would have to deal, uh, we'd have to get an agreement with ALDOT. I believe that uh we have already made preliminary uh inquiries with ALDOT, but again, I can turn to our city engineer, and she can give us a a little better explanation.
Yes, we've had initial conversations with ALDOT regarding the connector road. Um, as Mr. Bolt submits plans, as Forrest outlined, we will also have or can have subsequent conversations with them about temporary access for the subdivision development during construction.
Um, Ms. Frazier, based on your experience, I hate to put you on the spot here, but do you feel like that this is a reasonable request for us to make of ALDOT that they would, they would in turn provide a temporary construction access point?
They are typically amenable to temporary construction access points, so yes, I do think it's reasonable.
Okay.
That, that's something that Bolt Engineering has to apply for, right? That's not a city application?
That's correct.
Well, we will support, uh, we will support them if they do apply for it, and I think Alabama, uh, ALDOT has been appraised of that.
And one other comment, just for the information for the, the council, is um access to Phase B, which is on the other side of a lake, which was one of the problems which would create track, traffic through the Solomir subdivision. If we ever, if we're able to get the connector between Highway 14 and Richland Road moved up in our priorities, that would certainly be an alternative for a secondary entrance. So when we get around to talking about budget in the next few weeks, uh, I appreciate if everybody would take a look at, at that on your priority list. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. We've got a motion and a second. We, we went through all this, so uh at this time, we'll do a roll call vote, and this vote will be that a yes would be uh that you are approving this rezoning and a no that you are not approving this rezoning, okay? This is the second reading. Is everybody clear on what we're doing? And Mr. Buston, did I describe that correctly? Yes. Okay, so we'll be in a roll call to approve. Is everybody okay with that? See, anybody got any questions? Okay, Lindsay?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? What was that? Witten? Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 7B2 is Mike Meyer requesting to rezone 4.09 acres from rural to comprehensive development district on property located at 2202 Martin Luther King Drive. The planning commission announced the recommended approval of this request. This is the second reading, and a public hearing is required.
Need for approval.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. This time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this, please raise your hand. We will call on you. Please give your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing no one for the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, seeing here no one. We will take a vote on this. Roll call Lindsay, just as we did last time. Lindsay?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor? Witten?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Mayor, those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Nothing under other business, Mr. Buston?
Nope.
Okay, this time, there's an opportunity for citizens open forum. If there are any citizens that'd like to address the city council about anything that might be on your mind, please raise your hand. We will call on you, and remember, you have three minutes, and please provide your name and address for the record. Anyone who'd like to address the council? Okay, no one for the citizens open forum, so we will close that. Do I have a move to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I'm moved. Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.